Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, members of board, building official Mr. Stewart Tom, Fire Marshal Jeffrey Halpert, and members of the staff. And thank you for joining us today for Building and Fire Board of Appeals regular meeting. Celeste, may I have the roll call, please?
Yes, Board Member Tatulian.
Present.
Board Member Chuck Magian.
Here.
Chairman Kishishian.
Here.
Item number two, okay, report regarding posting of agenda. The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, October 16th, on the bulletin outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Okay.
Item number three, the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, at this time, I would invite you to join us for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Item number four, calls for the approval of the meeting minutes dated September 18th, 2013.
Chairman Kishishian, members of the board, in your packet that was delivered to you should have been a copy of the minutes from our previous meeting dated September 18th, 2013. Prior to the dispatch of those minutes, I did have an opportunity to take a look, and I can tell you that Celeste did a thorough job with those, but if there were any corrections or things that you would like to bring to our attention now would be an appropriate time. Otherwise, if upon your personal reviews of those minutes, you felt that they were accurate, a motion for approval as submitted would be appropriate.
Do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments. I can entertain a motion.
Thank you.
To approve the minutes as presented.
All second. Your roll call, please.
Board Member Tatulian.
Yes.
Board Member Chuck Magian.
Yes.
Chairman Kishishian.
Yes.
Next item, oral communications. Today, we have none. And the next item after that is old business, and today, we have none. Item number seven, calls for new business, the final review of the proposed local amendments to Title 24 California Code of Regulations for the 2014 Glendale Building and Safety Code.
Chairman Kishishian, members of the board, I'm actually going to switch seats so I can drive the presentation. I have a brief presentation, and I will continue as soon as I move over. Okay, as Celeste has indicated, under new business, we have the final review of our proposed local amendments. Last month, in this very room, both Mr. Halpert and myself presented to you our proposal for what we believe are the appropriate local amendments to the California Building Standards Code to constitute what we propose for the 2014 City of Glendale Building and Safety Code. To go over that summary, I do have a brief presentation that I would like to present right now, so if I could draw your attention to the screen. So, as I indicated, this is the final review of the local adoption of our Building Standards Code. After a recommendation from this board, the next step, of course, would be to present this same package to the city council. To go over what we briefly, to go over what we discussed at our last meeting, I would like to restate that the California Building Standards Code, which is comprised through 12 distinct parts of Title 24, the California Code of Regulations, is what constitutes the rules and regulations which determine how buildings shall be designed, how they need to be constructed, and how they should be utilized to ensure public safety. The code is commonly referred to as the Building Standards Code or the State Building Code, despite the fact that it is comprised of multiple parts, which include the subtrades which I will go over. Title 24, the California Code of Regulations, presents general standards that are applicable throughout the entire state without special consideration for local conditions. And so for that reason, since the City of Glendale and all local jurisdictions have their own special local conditions from time to time, it is necessary for those local jurisdictions to incorporate some minor revisions to that code to ensure that the people of that jurisdiction are adequately protected. Before we move on, I do want to describe what Title 24, the California Code of Regulations, is. There are actually 12 volumes to Title 24. Volume 1 is the administrative code for the state. Volume 2 of Title 24 is the state building code. Volume 2.5 of Title 24 is the California residential code. Volume 3 is the California electrical code. Volume 4 is the California mechanical code. Volume 5 is the California plumbing code. Volume 6 of Title 24 is the state's energy code. There is no volume 7. Volume 7 is presently reserved. Volume 8 of Title 24 is the state historical building code, which establishes rules for how to treat those buildings which are either designated as historical resources or potential historical resources. Volume 9 of Title 24 is the state fire code. Volume 10 is our existing building code, which prescribes how existing buildings shall be treated. Volume 11 is the California Green Building Code, also referred to as CalGreen. And then Volume 12 is the referenced standards code, which includes those special standards which indicate how things shall be tested and treated if they are not identified by prescription throughout the code. In terms of local adoption, there are two state statutes which authorize and empower jurisdictions such as ours to make the local changes which I previously described. California Health and Safety Code Sections 17958 and Section 18941.5 are the governing statutes. Basically, those two statutes indicate that local jurisdictions may amend building standards in order to address local geologic, topographic, or climatic conditions. Clearly, cities like Glendale, which has a lot of hillside property, were also located in close proximity to various faults, including the Sierra Madre Fault, San Gabriel Fault, and other faults which underlie our strata here in the greater LA Basin area. And there are other conditions, including seasonal climatic conditions. When we get the Santa Ana winds blowing in our area, especially due to the topographic effects from our canyons in the Glen Oaks Canyon area and Chevy Chase Canyon area, we have special needs in order to protect the residents in those areas. Local amendments must be at least as protective as the statewide statutes. No jurisdiction, including Glendale, is authorized to amend a code standard to make it less protective than the minimum state code. All of our amendments must be at least as protective as the minimum state standard. And in most cases, the only reason to make those modifications is when it is determined that a higher level of safety is necessary due to those local geologic, topographic, or climatic conditions. Justifications must be filed with the California Building Standards Commission pursuant to law, pursuant to 17958 and 18941.5 of the Health and Safety Code. Every single amendment to a building standard must be individually justified on the basis of a local geologic, topographic, or climatic condition. And after the governing body adopts those amendments, those justifications have to be filed with the Building Standards Commission as a matter of public record. We have done that every three years, and we intend to do so again this cycle. Amendments to energy standards must be certified by the California Energy Commission before enforcement. This is a very, very important aspect of local code adoption, one for which many jurisdictions are just now becoming familiar with this standard. Where this is coming to light is for those jurisdictions that may choose to amend its green building standards, if they are amending standards that are not energy-related, such as water conservation or things of that nature, there is no need to take further action once they justify it and file those justifications and amendments with the Building Standards Commission. However, if an amendment to CalGreen is made locally and it affects energy, for example, if this city or any city were to adopt an amendment which required a different efficiency level on air conditioning equipment, or a higher or better fuel utilization ratio for water heaters, that does affect the energy, and those amendments must be submitted to the California Energy Commission, and they must be certified by the CEC before the local jurisdiction can enforce it. That applies even if the governing body by ordinance makes that change. So, if there is an amendment, and it turns out that there is one that we will be talking about, that affects energy even after the local governing body, such as our city council, adopts it into ordinance, we have further actions which we must pursue to see to it that the CEC certifies that amendment. And then finally, local adoption and enforcement of these standards may not occur prior to January 1st, 2014, for this cycle. So all this work that we have been doing over the past month, actually, we've been doing it for months, but the original presentation before this board last month and what we will be presenting to the city council is all in anticipation of an effective date of January 1st, 2014. So, what is the Glendale Building and Safety Code, and what is it that we're talking about? Our current code that is being enforced today and has been enforced for the past two and a half years, and a similar version every three years prior to that, our current code was adopted by ordinance number 5714 and also ordinance 5736. Some people might wonder, why did it take two ordinances to adopt our current local code here in Glendale? Ordinance 5714 adopted the majority of our code. It turns out that due to some additional effort, it was necessary for this city to determine what additional green building standards it saw were necessary. The adoption of our amendments to CalGreen took place at a different time, under a separate and distinct ordinance, and that was ordinance number 5736. So that's why there are two different ordinance numbers for there. 5714 addressed everything except for CalGreen. So what is our particular local code? There are 10 volumes, and 5714 addressed the first nine. Volume 1A of our local code is our building code. Volume 1B of the Glendale Building and Safety Code is our residential code. Volume 2 is our plumbing code. Volume 3 is our mechanical code. Volume 4 is our electrical code, and volume 5 is our housing code. Moving on, volume 6 is our fire code. Volume 7 establishes our security code standards. Volume 8 is a very, very important code for us. It establishes standards for the maintenance of commercial and industrial property. It's actually these standards that are enforced through our Neighborhood Services Division to ensure that commercial and industrial property throughout the city are maintained in an acceptable condition. You may be familiar with some cities that as you drive through certain heavy industrial areas or commercial areas, the properties tend to be neglected and, in some cases, become unsightly, and in very, very bad situations, actually attract unsavory elements to the community. Our community tries to avoid that by establishing these standards in our volume 8. And then volume 9 of our Glendale Building and Safety Code are those green building standards that were amended under ordinance number 5736. So, what's new for 2014? I want to start off by reiterating what I did last month. For the most part, what we are presenting here is a carryover of our previous code, and most of that was a carryover of the code that was codified three years prior to that. Our code here in Glendale has been very good. It has done a very good job in protecting our community, both the residential and commercial aspects of our community, and we want to maintain that same standard for years to come. So it is a carryover code with very little change from our current codes. I would also like to point out that due to regional efforts to standardize local codes, we have attained a greater level of uniformity between our jurisdiction and neighboring cities. Of course, that's important because we don't want situations where architects, engineers, contractors, and the like are exposed to different standards here in Glendale from what they're accustomed to in neighboring jurisdictions such as Burbank, Pasadena, and so forth. For the most part, if a code is good for the region, it should be good for all communities within that region. Some previous local Glendale amendments have actually been eliminated because the California codes have caught up. And so for that reason, the package that was presented to you originally, while it seems rather hefty, it actually has a smaller number of amendments than we had last time, and that was true the last time we adopted a code. While the state of California has a very, very good code, in my opinion, the best in the country, because the state progressively and continuously updates its code every three years, the state trails some of the jurisdictions that have the opportunity to really focus on what is necessary based on the newest trends and the newest level of knowledge. We actually had some standards in our previous local code that we had adopted to address what we felt were some local deficiencies within the state code, and as the state has bolstered its code for this cycle, some of those standards have actually caught up to where we in Glendale and the City of Los Angeles and other neighboring jurisdictions had established the baseline standard for those codes. And since the state code has caught up, there's now no longer a need for us to have those local amendments, and so we've been able to eliminate them, and that's a good thing. We do have a small number of new amendments that have been added, and that's actually what I want to spend just a brief amount of time going over. And they are the same amendments that we presented to you last month, so there should be no surprises. But for those of the viewing audience at home that are watching on television that may not have been with us last month, I will go over them again. So starting with volume 1A, as I mentioned, that is the City of Glendale Building and Code. It turns out that there are effectively three new noteworthy codes. Everything else has either, the state has caught up, so we've been able to eliminate some local amendments, or the other amendments are identical, essentially identical to what we've had currently in our code and in previous editions of our code. But these three are the areas where there is some noteworthy change that will take effect in January of 2014. The first is what I would describe as a broad class of noteworthy changes. Structural design standards have now been updated from ASCE 7-05 to ASCE 7-10. And what that gets to is the American Society of Civil Engineers, Publication 7, the 2005 version, has now been updated to the 2010 version. That's what ASCE 7-10 represents. These are the design standards which dictate how various building materials, whether they be steel, or concrete, or wood, or aluminum, and so forth, be designed, how forces should be applied to them, and what design standards need to be considered by engineers throughout the entire United States. The previous code that we are enforcing today references ASCE 7-05 for a number of provisions, including local amendments. And in order to be consistent with current trends, since the current standard, the state of the art, so to speak, in design is ASCE 7-10, we do have an amendment to update all of those references to the 2010 version. The 2005 version is simply outdated. The second noteworthy area of change within volume 1A, our building code, has to do with exterior balcony projections into the right-of-way. This is of interest to this board because last month, this was the item that you had a number of questions on. When this matter was presented by Mr. Agus of my staff last month, there was a question as to whether or not this amendment would prohibit all projections into the right-of-way. And there were a number of very good examples where projections might be warranted and, in fact, necessary. The two examples that come to mind that were brought up by this board were, number one, what about signs? Commercial buildings that are built all the way to the front property line often have signs affixed to the exterior of the building, and those signs, while they may be rather low in profile, may project 7, 8, 10 inches into the right-of-way, but they are at a height that they do not present a safety hazard. The other example that was given, or question I should say, was what about awnings that may project out from the exterior of a building? Awnings are considered to be desirable features to provide temporary protection from the elements, whether they be the sun or the rain, while people enter a building or exit a building. And there are certain, there are certainly times in which awnings are appropriate and necessary. We were asked by the board to look into that and confirm that this particular amendment would not interfere with the ability to have reasonable and customary projections such as awnings and signs project into the right-of-way. We checked the language of the proposed amendment, and we confirmed with the Public Works Engineering Division, which proposed this amendment, and this amendment only applies to true balcony structures. Of course, there are reasons why true balconies are not desirable, suspended above the public right-of-way where people may be driving their vehicles or walking as pedestrians. And the first one that comes to mind is usable balconies may have potted plants or other physical objects resting on a railing, and if somebody is careless and a potted plant were to be knocked over the edge of a balcony that projects over a heavily walked sidewalk within the right-of-way, somebody could be seriously, seriously injured. So that was the purpose of this particular amendment. It does not have a prohibitive effect on other customary amendments, and I think that that clarification addresses the concern that was raised last month by this board. And the third and final noteworthy area of change within the building code is that projections into alleys will be completely prohibited except for footings that are located at least eight feet below grade, and those footings would be allowed to project no more than 12 inches. So it would be a very, very minor projection into the alley, and it would be so deep that it would not interfere with utilities or other features that are expected to exist in a shallow manner within the alleys. Our alleys are just so narrow, either 20 feet or narrow in many cases, that if you have a large panel truck or some other type of vehicle driving down the alley, and you do not prohibit projections into the alley from either side, it is certainly possible to cause some damage and some collision. So those are simply being prohibited. But these are things that in the past, we've tried to discourage anyway, so we don't think that there's a real effect. With respect to volume 1B, our residential code, there are no significant changes. What we are proposing for 2014 is essentially identical to what we have right now. Likewise, with volume 2, our plumbing code, no significant changes, and that can be said of volume 3, our electrical code, and volume 4, our mechanical code, as well. Those three codes, the plumbing, mechanical, and electrical, sometimes referred to as our subtrade codes, there really are not a lot of things that we feel are necessary to change here in the City of Glendale. Those particular codes do an adequate job in addressing how those building systems should be designed and constructed. For volume 5, our housing code, similarly, we have no significant changes to the code we're proposing. Housing standards in the state are heavily, heavily regulated, whereas most of the building standards that we deal with are codified at the state level through Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations. Housing standards are in a separate title, Title 25, of the California Code of Regulations, and those are heavily regulated by the state through the Department of Housing and Community Development. We see no need to have any further changes, certainly nothing beyond what we've had for years. For volume 6, I will actually turn it over to our Fire Marshal, Mr. Halpert. He can talk about this. Likewise, there are very few changes. There are three areas that are noteworthy. He described them before, but for your benefit, I'll have Mr. Halpert talk about them again.
Thank you very much, Stewart. And Chairman, members of the board, very briefly, again, we did review these last time, but just again to reiterate for sake of brevity, the only significant or noteworthy changes were these three items shown on the screen. The first item is really kind of a consumer protection, I'll call it, type of a provision, a handy-dandy reference guide for how often fire systems need to be tested, certified. Who can do those? Not very clear in the code as it stands. So this table, which is a Glendale-developed table and had been refined over many years, we further refined it. This code adoption is a very nice reference guide. The second item and the third item are both related. The California Fire Code limits, allows, with limitation, above-ground storage of flammable and combustible liquids. And locally, we have traditionally, for many, many years, prohibited nearly all above-ground storage of flammable and combustible liquids, and with very few exception when there is justification to allow it. Under a code modification, we have allowed and approved certain installations, again, very limited situations where there is distinct justification. And what we've done in this proposal is to actually codify those minor justifiable uses and put them into the code, so an applicant wouldn't have to go through an administrative process, they could just follow the code. So we still maintain a very high level of safety by still limiting what is allowed, but it puts us a little more in the direction of alignment with the state with limitations. And that's pretty much it as far as noteworthy. Otherwise, we've just carried over all of our previously codified code amendments.
I would also like to chime in that while these volumes may seem rather significant for above-ground storage tanks which may be carrying flammable or combustible liquids, they're actually quite a bit smaller than what is allowed by right at the state level. Off the top of my head, I'm not quite Off the top of my head, I'm not quite sure exactly what the totals are for individual tanks.
12,000.
12,000 gallons for an individual tank, and I believe 48,000 in aggregate if you have multiple tanks. So that could, in theory, allow for some very, very large tanks. There is a reason why the state has such large volumes for above-ground storage. There may be times in cities that are heavily industrialized to have large volumes of above-ground storage for fuels and combustible and flammable liquids. We really don't see that here in Glendale. We do have a need to have above-ground fuel storage from time to time, whether it be to support a generator or things of that nature. And the volumes that you see, they're either 1,100 gallons for a single tank, or if you have multiple tanks, 3,300 gallons in aggregate will actually provide for a very, very significant runtime. So even if it's for an emergency generator or something, that can be addressed. But there really is no need for our city, which doesn't have heavy, heavy industrial processing properties, to have storage of potentially dangerous materials in volumes larger than this. So I think the Fire Department did a nice job on this. And then just moving off or concluding, Volume 7, our security code. We have no significant changes here in Glendale. We do have some standards which are applied to certain types of buildings and properties to ensure that unwelcome people cannot gain unauthorized access into homes or businesses. And it's worked well in the past. We don't see any need to change that. For Volume Number 8, our commercial and industrial property maintenance code, as I mentioned earlier, this is where our city codifies standards, which allows our Neighborhood Services Division to address properties that are not adequately maintained, to comply with what we consider to be an acceptable standard or quality of life here in the City of Glendale. And for the most part, as long as commercial and industrial property owners adhere to these standards, or if they don't, when cited by Neighborhood Services, when they comply, for the most part, our city is maintaining good shape. And then finally, our last volume, this actually will conclude our presentation. I do want to point out that we did, by ordinance, make some amendments to our green building standards here for Glendale. Whereas Cal Green did establish some minimum mandatory standards for the entire state, our city felt that it was appropriate to bolster that a little bit and be slightly greener and slightly more sustainable than the minimum state standards. So we did adopt some additional standards. What I would like to point out is that some of the previous local amendments related to energy efficiency have now been eliminated, and we are not proposing those, and there's a very good reason for that. The State of California's Title 24, Part 6, energy standards have now been improved so significantly, commencing January 1st of 2014, that all of the experts have estimated that energy efficiency for new buildings is already going to be approximately 15% or possibly better than that improved upon what our previous energy standards were. Therefore, those few energy-related amendments that we proposed last time are no longer necessary. Now, while 15% is just a number to help you understand how significant the state's improvement of energy efficiency is, which will apply to all new buildings, I would like to point out that 15% above Title 24 actually is the target of the Tier 1 standard of Cal Green. And so whereas Cal Green establishes a baseline minimum mandatory requirement for all buildings, there were two voluntary standards that were at a higher level. The best way to look at it is, for those that are familiar with LEED, there are different levels of LEED. There's LEED Certified, LEED Silver, LEED Gold, and LEED Platinum. Cal Green wanted to have different levels for those that wanted to be better than the state standards. So whereas the minimum mandatory Cal Green standard was the target that everybody had to comply with, they also had a voluntary Tier 1, which was better, and then Tier 2, which could be considered the best. The Tier 1 standard was set, in terms of energy, was set at requiring that the building's energy efficiency be 15% better than Title 24 would otherwise require. That is how good Title 24 is expected to be, starting January 1st. So there really is no need to have those energy efficiency amendments. In fact, if we were to apply them onto an already 15% higher standard, some people argue that it could be prohibitive to attain that level. Because as you get closer and closer to 100% efficient, it just gets that much more difficult to achieve. I would like to point out that there is one exception to my statement that we are eliminating energy-related amendments, and that is with respect to one amendment that we have currently in our code, and that has to do with radiant roof barriers. For new construction, if you have a concealed attic space, we do require that a radiant roof barrier be installed. Some people think of it as that special shiny foil material that can be applied underneath the roof sheathing, or contractors can simply purchase plywood sheathing that has the reflective coating already installed on it. That particular feature is very, very cost-effective, because there is no additional labor involved. It's just the incremental cost difference between normal plywood and the plywood that has the shiny side on it. It turns out that those will generally pay themselves off in terms of a simple payback very, very rapidly. So we are still proposing that as an amendment to Cal Green, which is our last volume. And so to conclude in summary, let me show you where we are. We now have concluded our second public hearing, this hearing. Our first one, of course, was last month, on September 18th, 2013, and today, on October 23rd, this is our second public presentation of this code. Our next steps is to introduce this ordinance to our City Council. It is presently scheduled for the City Council Regular Meeting of November 5th, 2013, at which time, we certainly hope that, with a recommendation from this body, that our City Council introduce this ordinance as it has been presented, including the resolution which justify those findings. The adoption of that ordinance would follow two weeks later, at the City Council Meeting of November 19, 2013. And what that means is this would then have an effective date of January 1st, 2014. There's a question that is always asked every code adoption cycle, so I figured I'd just put a bullet in here. Plans that would be submitted into Plan Check on or before December 31, 2013, would be subject to our current code. It's for plans that are submitted into Plan Check on or after January 1st, 2014, that would comply. So for those people that have already submitted their plans, but they may not be able to pull their permit until partway through January, or February, or March, or any time during 2014, if those complete plans were submitted into Plan Check prior to December 31st, 2013, they are subject to our current code and won't be subject to our new code. And with that, that concludes my presentation. As I mentioned, this is the second public hearing of what you've already seen. We have addressed the concerns that were raised by this body, and I would like to officially go on record as indicating that no members of the public have submitted any corrections or comments on the package that you received. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions?
No questions, may I?
Thank you for your thorough explanation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stuart Tom and Mr. Halpert, and members of the staff. An outstanding work you guys have done. I want to commend you and your staff for the work and the time that you spent on this, not only on the local level. I know, Stuart, that you're also involved in the state level, and this is, the City of Glendale is very, very fortunate to have you as a building official for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your work.
I appreciate that. At this time, if there are no comments, it would be appropriate for one of the members to make a motion regarding a recommendation to the City Council.
Entertain a motion?
Chairman can't do it.
We'll have to read this.
Sure, please.
I'll make a motion that the Building and Fire Appeals hereby recommends to the City Council the proposed local amendments, the portion of CCR Title 24 as adopted by California Building Standards Commission for the Glendale Building Safety Code 2014 as set forth in the report of the Director of Community Development dated October 23, 2013.
I will second that motion.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. A board member, John Tatoulian.
Yes.
Board member Michael Chokmazian.
Yes.
Chairman Eric Kishyshian.
Yes.
I think we can move on to item number nine, adjournment, if there are no further comments or questions.
I guess we the motion to adjourn?
We should have.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Thank you.
Roll call. Chairman Chokmazian.
Yes.
Chairman Tatoulian.
Yes.
Chairman Eric Kishyshian.
Thank you.
Board member John Tatoulian, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.